It's nine thirty, August second, two thousand and eighteen. So we'll just call the meeting of the Lebanon County Commissioners to order. And as typical, we'll begin with the most assignments. Thank you. Please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll do my best to control this raunchy, raucous crowd this morning. Next, we'll move on to public comment and David will get.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Weisnick. For Denny Tan Gap for the back of the Gap report. So far to this date, we've had over one hundred and seventeen thousand troops train on the Gap. So we're well on our way of exceeding our numbers for last year, making us once again the most utilized National Guard installation in the country. Coming up for this coming week, we'll have over fifty-two hundred troops on the Gap. And for the week after that, we'll go down a little bit, but we'll have over forty-two hundred troops training on the Gap. And that's in addition to the twenty-two hundred people we have that work every day on the Gap. Want to thank the Commissioners for coming out, supporting us when we got our award from the Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Army for excellence in conservation and natural resource management. That meant a lot to all of us to have you come out and honor us with your presence. We just finished up the National Army National Guard Best Warrior Competition. It was held at the Gap. That was a remarkable thing. That was the fourteenth best National Guard soldiers in the country. They compete for that honor. Came and went through a strenuous, strenuous set of obstacles, courses, shooting, followed by ruck march. If any of you all, everybody in the military, that involves putting a forty-pound pack on your back and marching for fifteen miles or so. For time, they actually did that down at the Gettysburg Battlefield, which was very fitting for us. And the winners of that was Sergeant Jordy Brewer. He was a Kentucky National Guard Sergeant. He won the Best Non-Commissioned Officer in the National Guard. And another young lad, Specialist Bailey Ruff. He was a mechanic from the South Dakota National Guard. So showed that we do things of national significance at the Gap. And proud and honored to do that. We are gearing up for March for the Fallen. That's our annual twenty-eight mile march. For those of y'all that want to, you can put a forty-pound rucksack on your back and enter and come out and honor our Pennsylvania War Dead. We've built quite a community with that. For those that don't want to do the twenty-eight mile march, we have a fourteen-mile march.
Much better.
Which is better. And for those that are old and broken like me, we have a five K. So there's three events that you can come and support wounded warriors, Pennsylvania wounded warriors, our MWR programs, and honor those young men and women who've made the ultimate sacrifice for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Sally, you'll be happy to know, this month, there is no big boom live-fire training scheduled, believe it or not. Now, that could be subject to change with the needs of the Army. But I will tell everybody on the night of the August of eighth and into the early morning of August ninth, we're going to have an aviation event. That probably is going later than we normally train with helicopters. So we're just letting our local residents know that's going to happen. It's kind of out of the normal occurrence. So nobody thinks anything is going on that should startle them. Lastly, Public Affairs Officer Lieutenant Colonel King Swire. They wanted us to put out this notice. This is the last opportunity for Persian Gulf conflict bonuses for veterans. There's a press release here. I will leave here. But eligible veterans who served on active duty in the Persian Gulf Theater of Operations from two August nineteen ninety to August thirty-first, nineteen ninety-one, have until the thirty-first of this August, two thousand and eighteen, to apply for a special, one-time payment to honor their service and sacrifice. Seventy-five dollars per month for each month they served in theater, up to a five-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar maximum. This was a long, or a bonus that was passed by the General Assembly to honor those that served in Desert Storm. There's additional monies for any of the family, surviving family members of someone who was KIA. There is a website that you can go to, which is the easiest to apply for the bonus. I will leave this here for anybody that might have interest on this. But matter of fact, I'll give a phone number. You can, media can contact a Mr. Joseph Butera, B-U-T-E-R-A, seven-one-seven, eight-six-one-two-one-seven-eight. He will assist that veteran in applying for that bonus. So good thing that we've got going to honor those that served in Desert Storm. I hope they avail themselves of it. And pending any of y'all's questions, that's all we have for today.
I don't have a question related to your report, but I just, I haven't seen much in the media. Maybe I've missed it locally about the remains of the Korean folks that are there.
They had a return ceremony at Hickam Air Base in Hawaii yesterday, where the remains were starting to, that's the way that they will come back.
It seems like that's a big deal from the, is that?
It's a big deal to all of us for those remains to come back. I would not be surprised if out of that many remains, we probably may have involvement at the VA Cemetery for that. If that happens, I'm sure we will gear up and have the appropriate honors for those folks.
Thank you again, David.
Thank you all.
As always, we appreciate you taking the time to meet.
Our pleasure.
Next, we'll take approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last meetings. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The minutes are approved. And we have our treasurer.
Good morning.
Where do you sit?
We had receipts on July thirty-first and August the first of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Our total cash is four million, four hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and one cent. Our expenditures this week are one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Our distributed tax claim is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and four dollars and six cents. So that leaves us a cash balance of three million, ninety-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered.
Thank you, Sally.
Morning.
Good morning. We are ready.
Michelle Edgers, Director of Human Resources.
Leah Shane, Human Resources Assistant.
Under personnel transactions, resignations, and terminations, Joy McKinney, full-time MDJ clerk termination effective July twenty-third. And Ashley Howell, casual part-time correctional officer trainee removal effective August second.
I'll move to approve the two positions changes.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the terminations as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered.
Under FMLA, leave of absence, Bonnie Warner from probation services, a fifteen-day unpaid leave of absence effective July sixteenth.
I'll move to approve that leave.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the unpaid leave as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Douglas Stumpf, change of status from substitute senior center manager at Area Agency on Aging to regular part-time senior center manager, no change in his rate effective August twelfth. And Catherine Hyren's promotion from Secretary D in the District Attorney's Office to administrative specialist in the District Attorney's Office at the rate of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-six cents by weekly effective August thirteenth.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to approve those changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So moved.
Under other transactions, Domestic Relations would like to hire Adrian Lopez as a team clerk at the rate of eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents by weekly effective August thirteenth. Domestic Relations would also like to hire Teresa Schlebach as an imaging clerk at the rate of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents by weekly effective August thirteenth.
I'll move to approve those transactions.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those hirings in Domestic Relations. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Serena Strauss, incremental increase telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services to the rate of seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents. And this is mandated to December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Tyler Brubaker, incremental increase telecommunicator with the Department of Emergency Services to the rate of seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents effective August twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Brett Noel Emick, incremental increase full-time correctional officer prison to the rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents effective August twenty-sixth. And the following two correctional officers are also effective August twenty-sixth at the rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. Jordan Rich and Eva Souchet.
Hold on, second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the salary board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered.
For mandated conference seminars, I have Jeremy Leffler from the Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the new clean tac officer class in Hershey, September twenty-sixth, with mileage and meals reimbursement, seven credits mandated by P S P. Todd Hirsch from the DA's Detective Bureau would like to attend the second annual PA extradition and interstate rendition symposium in Harrisburg, October eleventh, sixty-dollar total registration fee mandated by N A E D. Crystal Ledman and Danielle Wright from District Attorney's Office would like to attend the PA DUI Association's thirty-ninth Annual Meeting in Lancaster, November seventh through the night, three hundred and twenty-five-dollar total registration fee with meals and parking reimbursement mandated by the PA DUI Association. Daniel Gray from NHIDBI would like to attend the Foundations of Reflective Supervision for Early Childhood System in Harrisburg, August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, with mileage and meals reimbursement mandated by OCP. Robert Meese from Planning Department would like to attend the International Residential Code update in Bethlehem, September thirteenth, one hundred and twenty-five dollars total registration fee with front and tools reimbursement, six credits mandated by Department of Labor Industry. And Keith Winfrey from Planning Department would like to attend the following two trainings, the International Residential Code update in New Cumberland, September twenty-seventh, one hundred and twenty-five dollars total registration fee with mileage and tools reimbursement, six credits mandated by Department of Labor Industry. And Residential Electrical Academy in New Cumberland, November fifth through the eighth, three hundred and ninety-five dollar total registration fee with mileage and tools reimbursement, twenty-four credits mandated by Department of Labor Industry. And Don Hooten from Probation Services would like to attend following the Evidence in Child Exploitation in Supplehaven, August ninth and tenth, with meals reimbursement, fourteen credits mandated by J C J C.
I'll so move the approval of conference and seminar requests.
A second motion. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve attendance at the mandated conferences as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered.
Under requested, Sue Emrick and Christopher Sides from Children and Youth would like to attend the CAPS fiscal training in Mechanicsburg, August twenty-first, with mileage, meals, and tools reimbursement.
I'll so move.
Second.
A motion and a second to permit attendance at the requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So moved.
And Michael Anderson from Murder Registration would like to attend the Lehigh County Voting System Demonstration in Allentown, September eleventh, with mileage, meals, parking, and tools reimbursement.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Michael's attendance at that voter conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So moved.
Thank you.
Well, you see, JP's not here.
Is that one of the, Kathy runs things more efficiently? I won't make any female comments about that.
Go ahead.
Hey, I'm all for it, Kathy. You go, girl.
Well, thank you for having us here this morning. That's Sally Barry, the Director for Probation Services for the County of London. Audrey Rockwell, Deputy Breakfast for the Adult Unit. And we are here this morning to present the Adult Grant and Aid Contract, which covers the current fiscal year, two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and nineteen. This is actually part of a five-year contract that began July first of two thousand and seventeen and will conclude on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. And it pertains to writney awards that are provided through the state for the improvement of county adult probation services. So generally speaking, we do not receive the full amount that we request. So the full amount that we're requesting is on page two, three, four. Let's go with page five at the bottom in section four. So it would be one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fourteen. Unfortunately, I would have to report that we received significantly less than that historically. Last year, I believe it was around seventy-eight thousand dollars. So much, much less. The board does not satisfy the eighty percent, which is allotted, provided through statute. That's something that's really never been addressed. However, we continue to request the full amount every year. And we're not, as far as like not beating the eighty percent, that's something that's throughout the state. It's not limited to Lebanon County. So the award status has been pretty consistent as long as I'm, since two thousand and thirty. Pretty consistent and pretty consistently under the eighty percent. So I am requesting approval from the County Commissioners this morning to submit this grant aid application. There were some proposed, underneath the salary computation form, there were some proposed projections there for salary increases for next year. Because obviously, that's unknown. So I try to be somewhat conservative in making those salary projections.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the probation department applying for the grant aid. As typical, any questions or comments? During none, all those in favor of the grant aid proposal indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered.
Thank you, ladies. And I will just need two signatures. First one would be on page two. Commissioner Phillips, that would be for the County Commissioner Chair. I'm sorry, Commissioner Haynes, that would be for the County Commissioner Chair. I'm going to have to change that. I apologize. So I'll make that change and send this back over. My apologies. And then we'd need the, we'd need the signature on that as usual. And then the actual application would be on the last page. And I need all three Commissioners' signatures on those. And that one is correct. Kathy, I'll turn the financial statement over. I need to make a change on the, pardon, excuse me? Pardon, excuse me? I can skip. I need the original signature to go when I get it back. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good weekend.
Good morning.
Good morning. Alyssa, just want to introduce yourself for folks in attendance.
Sure. My name is Melissa Martinez. I'm the Deputy Director of the Area Agency on Aging.
Welcome. Proceed with your presentation.
I'm here to present a shortlist of our two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen contract changes to the County Commissioners and to review and approve. Our agency operates on a fiscal year, and our two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen year ended on June thirty. Our financial, our final financial, those information must be to the state by August fifteenth. So in order to complete closing on our books, we are presenting this shortlist of minor contract changes. There are five changes that increased total cost by one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We are not asking for any additional county funding.
We'll make a motion to approve the contract amendments with a net change of one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
I'll say the motion. All right, I have a motion and a second for those contract changes for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, for area policy on aging. Any questions or comments? During none, all those in favor of the contract changes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered, Alyssa, thank you. Anything else we can do? Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is Steve General.
My name is Bob Dapp. I am the Director of the Department of Emergency Services. To my left, I have Lieutenant Commander and Commander Joe Morales. And to my right is Final Lieutenant Supervisor Jeremy Lutwes. And we're here this morning with several things. First is request the Commissioners formally adopt proclamation about disaster emergency in reference to the rank of all events. The events by proclamation started on the twenty-first of July.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to formally adopt the document that we tentatively approved the day of the event. All those in favor of the proclamation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So ordered.
An update on last week's events. We're working on damage assessment just to pass along some information from General Booth on the county bridge, status, bridges that were closed due to the, the. The Doris Bridge is the only one that remains closed. And that is just the way it is very low for people to be on that. Structurally, there are no problems. You know, C U Morales will be able to report on damage assessment. How's it looking?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The flooding, the flooding event that took place from July twenty-second through July twenty-seventh, across central Pennsylvania dropped in excess of ten inches of rain in the Lebanon Valley. While flooding was widespread across the county, those municipalities in and around the Swatara and Quidda the Hilla Creek were especially hard hit, as well as the western portion of the county. The Swatara Creek at Harper's crested at seventeen point twenty-five feet, with the flood stage being nine feet. And that occurred on seven twenty-five at one P M. By far, basement flooding is the number-one issue reported, with more serious structural damage occurring from some sinkholes in and around the South Vanville, Palmyra area. As of this morning, Lebanon County Department of Emergency Services entered approximately one hundred damaged reports into the Commonwealth Reporting System. This information will assist in determining if flooding assistance will be made available. Of those one hundred damaged reports, over fifty percent were reported in Anvil Township. And I think I have to add here, they were very proactive in going after damage reporting. They actually set up folks physically at their municipal building to take reports on Saturday and Sunday. Who knows to that? Residents can still report damage to their local municipalities or through the D E S online reporting system at helpdesk.lcdes.org. And that'll be until Friday, August third, tomorrow, if I knew. We have to have it recorded by the end of business tomorrow. So up to the state.
Any questions?
Twenty-dollar amount with the hundred submissions? Just estimate?
No estimating. We are reporting, we're getting some that are just reporting damage, i.e. basement flooding, and some are actually getting estimates. So it's kind of all looking forward. What I'll do is try and get what the dollar amount that I've gotten tomorrow. I'm trying to tabulate all that. But it still will not be an accurate report because of the fact that some of the folks reporting are not giving us a dollar amount.
You know, if the state is likely to get towards eighteen million, do you sense that at this point?
No idea.
No idea.
All the counties that were affected have been reporting with the damage reporting system, we're able to see that. But it doesn't, the damage reporting system in the state doesn't assign a dollar value to it. I'm not exactly sure how that happens on there.
It's a shame the media isn't here, but to remind people that the county. To get any FEMA or PMA reimbursement, if there will be any. Do they need a declaration letter from their owner policy to say they submitted a claim and it was denied? Do they, is that part of the process? Do you have any?
Not that I remember.
Okay.
That did happen during Tropical Storm Lee, and people actually had to return the money plus interest if they did not have one.
The, if money becomes available.
If the money becomes available. It's, it's a, something that you just have in your file. You may be able to use it, you may not.
If, if money becomes available, they will, the state will come down to us with the process. And we'll make sure that we come home. Twelve hundred and four dollars by one senator.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
During this event, the nine-point communication center was affiliated with phone calls till midnight on Sunday, July forty-second, until noon on Thursday, July forty-sixth. We had a total of three thousand, one hundred and forty incoming and outgoing phone calls. During this event, we received roughly seven hundred phone calls per day, with Wednesday being the busiest, one thousand, thirty phone calls received. But this in perspective, the normal day, we receive approximately four hundred and seventy-five phone calls. Those common types of calls we dispatch during this event, flooded basements and road patches.
Anything else? Appreciate you taking the time to come up and bring this up to date.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
As usual, you're very, you get the best dressed. I'm sorry, David, but it's bloody David.
All gray suits today.
Hey, with the ship is mandatory.
Morning, Fitz. Morning, Christian.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay.
Okay. The reason for my visit today is to ask the Commissioners to execute a contract that they received from DCBD for the home grant. That was the application that you authorized us to submit back in February. We were successful in receiving a gold $600,000. That was requested by the county. And as a refresher, those funds would be used to continue the first-time home buyer program. And this time, it's a little bit different because the funding was reused in the city as well as the county as a joint application. So the contract that you have, and this is the language, responsibilities of the county, the responsibilities of the Commonwealth, and the contract period includes from May 16, 2018 through May 15 of 2021, is a figure of interest.
A motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of the $600,000 grant.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the grant as presented, the whole grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordered.
The last page they consulted was certainly, except for her, or something.
That was all it. Just checking to see if you missed anything.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Another one. Just Kathy, what else do we have?
Two items. Disabled veterans, real estate tax exempt request for Robert Hubler. One 960 Bridge, not going on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to grant the real estate tax exemption for disabled veteran Hubler. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Okay, next we have a medical assistance transportation program, participation grant agreement, and insurance of compliance from CAPS and TELUS all week. She needs to have assist signs.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the MATP allocation of $1,467.23.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's it? Anything else?
Anything else from the gallery? Thank you for coming this morning.